All right, perfect. Good morning. Let's call the Planning Commission meeting to order July 29, 2021. To start our board meeting this morning, we always start with invocation, but normally we start with Reverend Slay, but today we're going to start with Dr. Word. Word, I always default to you for a good one when we need one, so. I need the five-minute version.
Longer or shorter?
Just give me the, break it down a little shorter.
Let's go to Lord Prayer, how about that? Father, we come to you this morning, Lord, and we just want you to know that oftentimes, and I guess we truly do just jump into your presence, and we should, and where we should just, Lord, we should really just sit back and just be humble, that we can talk to you, just talk to you, and carry on a conversation. Father, we, so many times, we cast that aside. But this morning, we come to you with, Lord, with several requests. And number one, I just pray, Lord, that you would, you would be with Kim and Milton this morning as they go through, Lord, it's got to be the most tragic time in their life. And I just pray that you would just put a hedge of protection around them, around the family. Lord, and just give them some closure, knowing that Lord Nate is beside you this morning. And, Father, that's our prayer. Tragic, tragic time. And be with the rest of us here, the friends and the family. Lord, it's going to be a trying day. Father, also, this morning, we just ask that you would just let your presence be known here in this room, as the men and women that try to govern this county, Lord, to do the best that we can. We are so fortunate to live in such a prominent place, and that absolutely goes back to our leadership. And we thank you for it. And, Father, this morning, we just give you all the praise and glory. And all these things we ask of Jesus only amen we pray.
All right, thank you, Word. We're going to call the Planning Commission meeting to order, and so I'll entertain a motion to consideration and approval of minutes.
I'll make the motion.
So we've got a motion by Brad, second by Jay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Motion passes. Item three, old business. Mr. Renee, good morning. How are you doing?
Good morning, how are you, Mr. President?
Good.
So we have one item under old business, if y'all would like to review it. It's a conditional use permit for Phyllis Mitchell on Andrew Chapel Road. Do y'all want to review it?
I'm aware, I'm asking everything about it, if anybody else wants something.
That hearing's on Monday, right?
It is.
Mr. Vice President, if I could interject, just as a reminder, this is going to be the bid opening for our solid waste collection bids. We have individuals here, I think we set it for nine o'clock, if I recall correctly, we have individuals here who are prepared. Are they, are they, they're not here? Never mind. Mr. President, please proceed. I assume that we would have individuals here who were prepared to participate in that process. I was going to suggest maybe we go ahead and take that, but let's, since they're not out here, let's proceed. I apologize for interrupting.
All right.
Steve, you're good, little man?
Yes. So you don't need any action, this is coming into Monday.
That's right.
All right, so item four is new considerations. Mr. Renee, number one?
All right, so the first one is a county-initiated rezoning request for Old Pearson Road and Peggy Drive. The county is initiating a zoning change from MHP to RE1 for 19 parcels shown here. They're located on Old Pearson Road and Peggy Drive. These parcels are located north and east of the Old Pearson Road Mobile Home Park, which is here. It is zoned MHP, and it will remain MHP. That's an aerial view. And then that's the zoning map. You can see that the 19 parcels are zoned MHP, as well as the Mobile Home Park, but those parcels have a mix of mobile homes and houses on them. We've actually been contacted by America's Home Place. Somebody has a permit pending to build a site-built home. It wouldn't be allowed in the MHP zoning district. We've also received another call from somebody else who wants to just move a regular house. And this is the Mobile Home Park, and then these are those surrounding properties.
Where are we going to?
We're going to RE1.
You know, is that the one on 49?
It, it's on 40, it's Old Pearson.
So we have another one down this district, we're doing?
Well, it's not a Mobile Home Park, but there is some rezoning, yes.
That's why I sent you.
That's right, uh-huh. It's the third one on the list.
In more common terms, are we moving this from?
MHP, Mobile Home Park designation, to residential estate district, which would allow for site-built homes.
But also that you can only site-built homes?
That's right.
And there's no, no mobile homes in there now?
Well, these are surrounding properties. Now, there may be some rental mobile homes in that area, a few.
Okay.
Steve, the existing would be grandfather, under our context, which means that they can remain unless they are destroyed beyond 50% by some peril, whether it be fire, weather event, et cetera. If it's more than 50% damaged, we don't allow it to be returned for mobile home use. So the uses that are existing mobile home after the rezoning, assuming the board rezones, would remain as they are for however length of time that they stay in place as such. They can't be expanded, and no new mobile home would be allowed unless the board, through its process, found that there was a hardship that justified the placement there. That's how our context works. Under RE1, they're only allowed if a hardship can be established.
That's right.
I understand that.
Okay, so these are just surrounding properties in that area?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, so we've got a motion to set the public hearing. Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign, and the motion passes. Item number two, Mr. Renee.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Morgan Hodge at 136 Bella Floor Drive. Bella Floor is off of Highway 469. Mr. Hodge is seeking the conditional use permit to construct a 3,000-square-foot metal building house on this property. He's purchasing a three-acre tract on the west side of Bella Floor. This is a rendering of what the home will look like. He said it will have shiplap siding under the porch. And these are surrounding properties. That property is zoned RE1, and it doesn't allow for the metal exterior.
All right, the board wish to entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we said it.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Gaines, accept the public hearing, second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item two passes. Item number three.
All right, the last item under new considerations is a county-initiated rezoning request on Highway 49. The county is initiating a rezoning of six parcels on Highway 49. These are five of the parcels in this area that will be rezoned. They're currently C3, and we're asking to go to RE1A. All of these parcels have residential homes on them. That's the zoning map. You can see the C3 area, and the RE1A, it adjoins that RE1A zone. And then this is the sixth parcel. It's south of those first five, and it's a 25-acre parcel. Part of the property along the highway is C3. That area shown in red is C3. The remainder of that 25 acres is A1, so we're proposing to take that all to A1. There's the zoning map. You can see the C3, and the remainder of that property is being A1. It has a residential home on it as well. Now, these are pictures of the first five that will be rezoned. And this is the pictures of that second 25-acre parcel. And then these are surrounding properties.
Hold on. All right, so we should entertain a motion on item number three?
Make a motion, I said it.
So a motion by Mr. Calhoun, accept the public hearing, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item number three passes. I see nothing under item five, under Architectural Review. We roll to item six, Mr. Slay, on nuisance properties.
Absolutely. We've got two items for nuisance consideration. Both are District One parcels. I noticed that Mr. Morrison, our District One Supervisor, is not able to be with us today. I think he indicated where he stood on these matters, and so we will proceed. The first item is the Chastity Christine Anderson nuisance property consideration at 112 St. Charles Avenue, District One property. We will open that public hearing. Do we have anybody, Kansas? Okay. Apparently, we're not going to have anyone appearing before us today on this matter. Mr. Renee, if you'll demonstrate with the photos, please.
All right, so we received a complaint May 4 of this year, of someone living in a camper, the bus being parked there, rubbish, grass, and some animals, pigs. These pictures were taken May 4.
Where's the camp? Oh, I see it. I think, is that the white?
Yeah, the bus is black.
The certified mail wasn't received, but Ms. Anderson did call this morning and say that she wouldn't be able to make it to the meeting. These are the new pictures. The issue with this house is that it floods.
How are we going to fix that?
We can't fix that, but.
It floods?
It floods.
Is that why they had the camper?
That's why she's living in the camper, and I assume she's storing stuff in the bus. I don't, I don't know.
The bus is completely full.
But she has some animals that roam freely, I think.
She is familiar with the.
He is, mhm.
Yes. Yeah, so basically, basically what he asked was, was declared a nuisance, and allow you to watch it for some period of time. That's what I was reading on the email, what he asked on those items one and two. But we'll deal with item one right now.
Yes, sir, that's right.
So the board wish to entertain a motion to move it to Justice Court?
Most.
And allow you to watch it for some time? I don't think you put a time period on it, 30 days, 45 days?
I'm not moving it to Justice Court. You know, just stay on there for a period of time, a year, I think, or something.
When he, when he talked to me on the phone, he said if we had seen any change, or if they had come and they had made progress, but we've not seen any change in either of these two properties that we're doing today.
All right, so the motion is to move it up to Justice Court, Brad? Is that what you, or Gaines? All right, so Mr. Gaines makes a motion to move it to Justice Court, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item number one passes. So item number two, Mr. Slay.
All right. For the record, item one, public hearing is closed. Item two, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there's anyone here for, or for Sandra Temple, which is the nuisance consideration before us at 120 Summer Pine Drive. We don't have anyone appearing on this matter either. Ms. Renee, demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so we received this complaint April 5 of this year, about this abandoned, vacant home with grass issues. These pictures were the first pictures taken on the 5th of April. And then these are the new pictures.
Grass is tall. Is it abandoned?
It is.
Motion.
All right, so a motion to send it to Justice Court, declared a nuisance by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. And Mr. Slay reminds me the public hearing was closed. Thank you, both.
Hey, I know we're fixing to get into something else, but before we go, I hate that we, I mean, I, we, I know, and I think one of us made the motion on Ms. Anderson, and when somebody is down, their house has been flooded, and then here comes the county, and, but we don't, I mean, hopefully, justice can give them a different avenue to go through, or whatever. And, you know, we've got, I just want to say, Ms. Anderson, I'm sorry this process is having to go this route, but we don't have really any other alternative.
That's right.
All right. So the next meeting's held on September 2, 2021. So a motion to adjourn the Planning Commission meeting.
Motion, adjourn.
So a motion by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. So the Planning Commission is now closed, and we open up the Board of Supervisors meeting. And we start with Ms. Herring. How are you doing, Ms. Bridget? Sorry?
Sorry, he was causing problems.
Hey, that didn't surprise me a bit.
He was saying he wanted to go first.
Hey, hey, that didn't surprise me a bit. You, hey, when you sit behind, you get what you get, you know? Sorry.
I just can't slap him on video.
I know, I know. You could, nobody might.
This morning, we have our, our RFP, and we received two proposals.
Why, it's not thick.
I brought a knife in there. The first proposal received is from Republic Services. Are we just reading these in directly?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Who is that from?
Republic Services. The second proposal was from Waste Management. They submitted it electronically and in person. And I recommend these be taken under advisement.
I make a motion that we take those two under advisement.
All right, so we've got a motion by Mr. Gaines to take them under advisement?
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion?
Yeah, do we not, is it not easy enough to read to find out what we're going to get charged?
I'll say, I just didn't.
We'll start with the Waste Management proposal. They have provided pricing on a three-year initial contract term and a three-year renewal option as a priced unit. That price for one time per week is $16.35. Three-year, three-year renewal, two times a week, $23.38. And they have also provided some additional pricing that relates to recycling, collection, roll-off containers, and price per haul for those as well. And I can, I can go through all of those if you'd like. They have also provided pricing for a six-year agreement, which was an addendum that was sent out to all potential proposers. The price for a six-year bid, which would include the option for four additional annual renewals, for one time a week, collection, $12.11. For two times a week, $17.32. And then, under the six-year context, you've got pricing for your roll-off containers and your, and others. They have provided an alternate proposal that includes what is referenced as automated collection. I will obviously defer to the folks in the industry that can better explain it than I can, but in my head, what that means is that there is an automatic process for securing a container that is adapted to be used in an automated process. Those containers would have to be provided to your citizens, and they would have to learn and understand how to position them and orient them so that they could be automatically grasped and then emptied into the unit. So, and the alternate is for automated collection, two times a week, $20.95.
That's two times?
That's two times a week.
$20.
$20.95. The cart itself would be, I believe, I'm going to turn and look, Mr. Holloway. The first is on, is on the collector. If they have to get a replacement, they would be charged $8 per month as a rental for a replacement container. Okay?
There's no purchase option on there? That can't be discussed, though.
Yeah, it's not in the proposal, Jay, but, yeah. So that was, if I didn't say it, that's the three-year bid with a three-year option price for that.
You didn't do it one time?
Sir.
What was the one time?
There is no pricing for a one-time under the automated service. For the six-year with four-year renewals, automated, two times per week, $15.52. Disposal, if you're prepared.
15, what was that, 15?
15, 15.52. Solid waste disposal, three-year agreement, cost per ton, $25.50. Six-year agreement with four annual renewal options, cost per ton, $23.50. Y'all give me a moment. Based on my initial review of the Republic Services response, it appears that they have only provided pricing for disposal services. There is no proposal that I'm able to find for collection services provided by Republic. I stand to be corrected after further, more extensive review, but I'm anticipating that you are going to take these under advisement, and we'll have an opportunity to correct anything that I may be in error looking at. But I do not find anything in their response that indicates anything with respect to collection, okay? On disposal, three-year agreement, cost per ton for a three-year with three-year optional renewal, $19 per ton. Cost per ton, six-year agreement, four-one-year annual option for renewal, $19 per ton. Again, I believe that you've been asked to provide a motion, second, and take these bid proposals under advisement for review, and to come back and to award the bid at the board's pleasure.
Is it the board's, determine, well, do we decide if we want to do two different companies, or we?
Yes, sir.
Say no, all, it's better for us to do one, or, I mean, that's our decision?
That is all of y'all. Yes, sir. And under the, under the bid law, which has a specific section that relates directly to solid waste collection proposals, there's, there are, there is some different flexibility that's built into the bid law to allow the board some options to have discussions. And so the board actually can entertain the idea of entering into negotiations with a preferred collector on the basis of the proposals that you have, and within the limits, there is the ability then to fine-tune the ultimate agreement, all right? So my suggestion would be that you take them under advisement and allow the staff to continue to work towards achieving a proposal that is acceptable.
All right, so we've got a motion, we've got a motion, yeah, we've already got a motion, and second, we were in discussion in regards to tabling for review. So all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. So that passes. Mr. Slay, you have anything under your section, item three?
Very quickly, you guys have met Hayden Holler this morning. Hayden is a junior at Mississippi State. He is going to be involved in local science at State, and he thinks, he wants to go to law school, and so Hayden's come today to sort of observe a little bit about how county government operates, and so we wanted to give him an opportunity. That's my law partner, Chris Holler, sitting beside him. That's my, that's his dad. So he's proud father, sending Hayden off to State here this August, and we'll be excited to see how that goes. My hope is we talk about law schools.
Well, the good part is, we got, we got Chris overseeing Slay a little bit. I feel good today, you know? Sometimes he gets out there a little bit, and I'm going to call you, but I think today, if you're here, you can hear everything he does. So if you see something that's not right, just kind of signal me if you don't mind. Yeah, if you don't mind, so. Good, welcome you guys for here.
Just out for a while. I just hope you walk in the door, hell state.
There you go. Man, that's a great choice.
They won the national championship.
Did they?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Hicks, item number four. You have anything on your section you want to talk about?
No.
Or additional business? Nobody has additional business. Nobody has additional business. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison's got something. You want to go first, Gaines, or you want Mike to go first?
Look, Mike, I'm going to, I was fixing to call Mike up there.
Oh, I tried to ignore him.
Well, I want to ask a question.
I tried to.
Good morning. Oh, I wanted to kind of talk to y'all real quick about something that's kind of come across our desk, with the economy the way it is, and trucks and stuff bringing good money. We purchased some dump trucks a year and a half ago that was, had a buyback on, but we had, anyway, financing, it looked good, we purchased them, but right now, we don't have no warranty under these trucks. With the way the market is right now, we can get a fair value, more than our buyback was. We're getting a guaranteed of like $140,000 on these trucks, which consist of $560,000. And I'd like to sell these trucks and go back into a lease deal where the trucks was, get them back under warranty and maintenance. Because right now, if one of these trucks go down, it could cost you $9,000, $10,000 just to get it out of the shop.
Because they're not under warranty right now, right?
No, sir.
And you have one or two down already?
Yes, sir.
How many, we're talking about four?
Four.
And you want to replace them with four?
Four new trucks, yes, sir.
And you think the buyback right now is as high as it could be?
I think the buybacks is max right now.
It's actually more than.
Sorry?
When did we buy them?
About a year and a half ago. These are ones, well, last year, last year at this time.
Yeah, they were paid off about a year and a half ago. They're 2018 models.
They're 2018 models.
So they've been in inventory since probably late 2017?
Something like that.
But this allow you to get newer trucks under warranty if something goes down, it's covered?
And we're on a lease for about how much?
Well, I mean, lease on, per truck's going to run somewhere around $9,500, Steve, a year, per truck. And what I'd like to do is take the proceeds that we get from these trucks and use in the lease program.
So that would be about $800 a month?
Yes.
Run dump trucks?
Yes.
How long you want to lease them, or is that necessary?
I think what we'd like to do is go a three-year on these trucks.
Three?
Yes, sir. Two to three years. I want to look at the financing on it for that. I don't want to do the one-year on them.
I'd look at, yeah, two.
I mean, I want to get with Keith, and we look at that.
Even changing the tires at some point.
I don't know, man. You know, it seems like we buying a truck every month.
We not buying, we lease. We'll see it.
I got, I actually got the list. It's on my desk.
I have no idea what we buy. We do it so often that, I have no idea what we're doing.
But these were some that we had purchased. Basically, what happened was we overpaid on these trucks. I sold one truck and paid for these four trucks over a year ago, is what we did on it.
So why are we backing up from what the plan was?
Well, actually, these plans were supposed to go in the fleet, take the process of some little trucks I had, Jay. We didn't do that. And now, we've ended up running these trucks. I mean, we're just really going back in the lease deal, but, I mean, there was $110,000 buyback on these trucks a year and a half ago. We're going to get $140 for them today.
What's the downside of this?
Downside of it is, one goes down, we're going to have to pay to get it out of the shop.
I know, doing what you want to do.
The only thing I can see.
I don't really see a downside in it. I really see it as a savings.
The downside is that four years from now, we own the truck.
Yeah, we're just.
So, but.
We just.
I guess, I guess the part that scares me the most is the wear and tear of the vehicles. If we're tearing them up, and they're not under warranty, this covers them on the lease app. I mean, I guess the question is, are we better off leasing a vehicle, or we are better off purchasing the vehicle? I don't know the answer to that question. I'm saying, which one are we better off for?
I mean, we used to buy trucks every four years, but then we changed so many times now. We got some on a one-year.
Yeah, we got some on a one-year right now. Me and Keith talked about that. We're probably going to go to two years on those trucks, Jake, just because of the financing works a little better for us and the scheduling on that on the lease program.
Are most trucks on your buyback, though? You're getting rid of them in four years either way? I mean, that's why, or three years?
Well, anywhere from one year to three years, is the way we do it.
So you're flipping them anyway. You're not keeping a truck 20 years anyway. So if we're not, my thoughts are, if we're not planning on keeping them for 10 years anyhow, you might as well lease them, keep them under warranty, but we save the maintenance costs.
What was our operational policy before?
Uh, we're running about, on a three-year truck, we're running. Uh, we're running about, on a three-year truck, we're running about $6,000, $7,000 on the operational cost. Now, on the one-year, we're not, we're changing oil one time. It cost us about $400. The trucks we just got rid of the other day?
So we're, we're running those for?
One year.
At $400 per month?
No, $400 one time.
And you're wanting to go to a lease with $800?
Yes, sir.
Plus your lease payment, so the operational cost?
I mean, your lease payment will be about eight.
That's what you're asking about, operational. Your cost to carry that as an asset is your lease cost?
Plus? Plus your operational cost. The, the carrying cost is really what you need to be thinking about. But Mike, when we've had prior conversations, and I could be wrong about these specific trucks, but somewhere on the order of about 10 grand per truck, per year.
Yeah. I mean, that's about what it costs us to run a leased truck.
My thing is, if you're going to get rid of them every three years anyway, and your buyback, and your buyback now is high as you're going to get it, because you, like, these trucks you're talking about selling, when would you get rid of those on the buyback? Next year?
No, we, we, we own them.
We own them, but I mean.
They're paid for. They're.
So would you ever get rid of them, or would you keep them forever?
We'd run them until we start having significant amount of problems.
Computers messing up all the time. It's costing so much money.
So they're messing up now?
That's right.
So they're ready to, we would be ready to go through the buyback.
The biggest thing with this new equipment is, just like Brad said, is, I mean, they're computer-based. I mean, if you don't have the software to download them, you got to take them to a shop. And we can't buy the computer system because we don't know what kind of truck we're going to get in a bid situation. We don't know whether it's going to be a Mack, KW, International. You can't buy all that software. I mean, it's about $25,000.
If you're going to carry the trucks in, in terms of ownership, if you're going to carry them, they're not going to be under warranty, then you've got to have a way to provide the maintenance for them in-house, or you're going to pay to, to have the maintenance done at a private shop. And I, I think what Mike's seeing here is, you'd have to have people in the shop who know what they're doing, trained, have the software available. Those are all fixed costs that you're going to carry forward now. That has to be included in, in what you're expensing for that maintenance piece of that. I think what he's saying is, the idea is, make the maintenance piece the responsibility of the manufacturer slash dealer.
And that's why we've always done it. Like I said, when we kept these trucks, Jay, we thought we was going to push them in the fleet and get rid of some small trucks. It just didn't work out with the budget that year on it.
One, one hole that we've had is how to force the manufacturer dealer to make sure that if we do have one that goes down, and it's under warranty, that they give us an equivalent unit to have, so we're not down waiting on it.
Was that normal?
That's a hard piece.
Solve that, though?
Well, it depends on who gets the bid, Jay.
Yeah.
That's the frustrating part.
How does the lease work?
I mean, basically, the truck, new trucks going to cost like 130,000. We're going to use that number. It's somewheres around 128, 130. It depends on how the bids come in. But I'm going to use 130. So in three years, we're going to get somewheres around 90 to 95,000 back. Usually on a three-year deal, you don't get as much money back on the buyback because the truck has more wear and tear on it. And, but, what we're using the trucks for, I think, this one, the three years, is going to work the best for us. I don't know that until I put the bid together and we see what the financing's going to look like. Just like the, the big truck, the trucks we're running right now, the financing worked out the best for one year. Cost us, what, 90, $9,000 a year? For one year, we turned it in.
But you're changing that, though.
We may change it, I don't know. I mean, we're going to put it out there for one, two, and three, and see how it works. But I mean, I've got to, something me and Keith talked about the other day, we got to make our leases work in our schedule with our budget, too. So that makes an impact whether we go one, two, or three years, or even four.
So if you can lease this, and it'll come under warranty the whole three years?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Which is what we were doing originally, I thought.
That's what we was doing originally. But when, like I said, when we seen that these trucks all had to do with sale one to pay for four, we was going to put them in the fleet and replace some of these smaller trucks, but that didn't, it didn't work that way. So all we're basically doing is taking the trucks that was originally.
Just do me a favor, will you give me that list?
I got it on, I got it.
I have a little cheat sheet.
I got it on my desk. I got it on my desk, and I forgot to bring it this morning. Uh, but that's what I'd like to do. And, I mean, we can look at the bids and see how it looks, and, uh, but I think it'll be a savings for us on the long run.
So Mike, you wanting to, uh, sell or take the bid, those four trucks? That's what you need a motion to do, right?
Yes, sir. Well, we got to add all this, but, yeah, we'll take a motion to sell those trucks, and then we'll take another motion to ask for advertisement. Let's bridge it on that.
All right. So the board wish to entertain a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add to the agenda.
All right, so motion from Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, the like sign, and it's added to the agenda. So now, um.
And what I, and what I'll do, hang on for, I'll come back with a surplus. I'm, I'm going to take guaranteed buybacks, see who comes back, and then we'll know who to surplus it to, Daniel, if I'm right, Craig.
So.
The inventory's not going to be a problem when we do that. They, they got them waiting.
Well, supposed to. I mean, we're going to put it out for bids and, and see who, who comes.
We, we put time limitations on when they can actually produce the goods.
Yeah.
So it'll be in the bid.
That's right.
We'll have a timeframe within which they actually have to supply the item.
I mean, we put 30, 60, 90 days, whatever, you know, so we can turn, and we're not without trucks and, on that, but.
All right.
Y'all go ahead. Thank you.
I'm making a motion to, uh, take bids for, for any trucks.
All right.
Authorize the bids.
That's what we're going to do, is, uh, so we've added to the agenda. So make a motion to approve by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. All right. Is all you?
That got both of them?
They get, Slade, did that get everything you needed on that?
I think it got.
So that, that motion, Brad, just be sure I'm right on that. That motion was to take them to auction?
To do both.
To do both items, right?
And to take bids on.
And take bids on the other one. So, yeah.
They both got added, and then we voted on both of them collectively.
Yes, sir.
Jared, we good?
Yeah, plenty of things.
That's right.
Forward, just additional comment. I live in probably the biggest farming area where there's a lot of equipment and stuff, trucks. Sometimes you may, I may get a question, why does the county drive all these newer dump trucks? And I hope that you just explain why, and, and to explain my feelings. I, I have a tractor, a, a few of them, but anyhow, um, I spent 20-something thousand. I could have foreused, and I thought, boy, I'm doing good. Uh, I could have leased one, or bought a new one and had a warranty, but I didn't. And it wasn't very long. I had a $13,000 shop cost on the PTO. And, boy, then I'm scratching my head, but I got, you know, everything's good, and got it back in the field, and now my hydraulics on pickup. So here I am again without a warranty. And these farmers and people have seen that over the years, so when you, when you're coming through Lee'sburg or Fannin or wherever, and you may see some 1970 tractors, but you'll see more newer equipment that's been put in the field because they're not down working on them in their leased equipment.
Yes, and, and I mean.
We're not the only ones.
Correct.
Correct. And I mean, and, and you go back to just the trucks we sold the other day, Mr. Gaines, uh, I mean, we had a buyback of 143,000 on them, uh, minus, you know, you got to take out your commission and stuff like that, but we sold those trucks the other day for 173,000.
And these can still come back in higher than the 149 guarantees.
I mean, that's just a guarantee we've got on it. So, I mean, so we ended up making, you know, doing very well, and we've got proceeds to put back toward these trucks.
You, you go into the auction with a floor.
Yeah.
But the auction could bring higher, and that's what he's telling you happened the last time.
And right now, the way the market is, is, is typically doing that. Now, if we'll bounce back and go the other way, then we'll have to look at things. When we got, when we kept these trucks, the floor was way down here. So, uh, right now, we've got the floor up here.
Supply and demand.
All right.
Thank y'all.
All right. Do you have something else you want additional business?
No.
Hey, I got one question on additional business, Craig. Larry had asked me at one point about doing the same thing again for the schools he did last year. If he chose to do that route or that process of giving the money back to the schools, athletic programs, the process still should be already approved in the same, right? It'd just be, go through the board, board approve it same way, but as far as your approvals and legalese and all of the Ts you cross should be good, right?
The way we structured the interlocal agreement was designed to offer the flexibility of repeating, so it won't be required to go back to the AG for additional approval on the interlocal. What we would do is simply amend the interlocal. Keep in mind, we had to put an exhibit to the interlocal that included the actual distributions to the schools, and my anticipation would be, Daniel, that, that the distribution each time will change. It won't be the same, so we'll have to amend it so that it reflects whatever the actual distribution to each school is.
I know Mr. Swales had asked if we would just check on that, see if he, if he did it again, would the board, I mean, would the legalese all be cleaned up?
I would anticipate.
One-time deal.
That's what we did last time. We didn't know he'd get the money back again, so. He just brought it up, see what approval process would be.
We made it clear to everybody that this may not ever happen again, but we structured the interlocal to allow that it could so we can simply have each of the individual boards make their approvals and establish the distribution, along with Larry, amend the agreement to reflect the new distribution for whatever that would be, and move forward.
All right, anything else under additional business? Executive session, Mr. Slade?
I don't have anything for the board's agenda. Where are we going to discuss our August 2nd? Okay.
Ooh, I wonder if he's got like one of those little calendars where he just takes the day out and crosses it all? Are you ready for August 2nd? You getting close?
Your legal doesn't have an executive session.
Mr. Hicks got an executive session.
Yes, sir, personnel.
All right, so the board wish to entertain? Mr. Gaines?
Making a motion that we go into executive session for personnel.
All right, so motion by Mr. Gaines, go into executive session for personnel. Second by Mr. Calhoun, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. So we are in executive.